Dear head and father, thank you for another beautiful day in the city of Rainbow City. Thank you for the opportunity to govern one more time in this wonderful city that we're blessed to live in. Be with us and guide us as we make our decisions tonight. But with a heavy heart, we'd also like for you to be with the Tellyer family in Selma, Alabama, in their loss, tragic loss of their son this weekend in a football game. But we also want to be asked to be thankful for the opportunity to celebrate with Ms. Maxine Jones her 102nd birthday and the things that you have allowed her to see in her lifetime. And these things we ask, amen.
Attention, salute.
If you turn your cell phones to the off or vibrate position, we'd appreciate it. And I'll ask the clerk if she'll take a roll call.
Anita Bedwell, Randy Weiss, Jeff Prince, Jamison Jenkins, Clark Hopper, Mayor Taylor.
Here. Number five is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 12th of 2024, and I'd entertain a motion that we do so.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye?
Any opposed? Number six is personnel changes, and it's to accept the resignation of Katie Lipscomb, Library Assistant, effective 9/3/24, and to post for a Library Assistant position for 10 days to end on Friday, September 6. Also Avery Daniels to be promoted to Assistant Director of the Animal Shelter, effective Friday, August 16th of 2024, to accept the resignation of Eric Lindman in the Recreation Department, effective Thursday, August 29, and to post for a full-time position in the Recreation Department for 10 days to end on Friday, September 6th of 2024. Also to transfer Michael Klein from Street Department to Recreation Department, effective Friday, August 23rd of 2024, and to post for two openings in the Street Department, and those would, would that be on the same dates?
Is that on the red or the straight? Right department?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It'd be, yeah, it'd be, no, the, the follow-up, the two posts would be for the Street Department where we move those guys out. And I would entertain a motion that would do all of these in collectively.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye?
Any opposed? Yeah, and those, just for a point of record, those department, the openings in the Street Department were created from those transfers and also from someone that left not long ago. Number seven is ordinance number 593, a public hearing amending ordinance number 360 zoning ordinance by amending section 173, 313, and 314 to correct section reference. And if there's anyone that'd like to speak for or against that, I would ask that they'd come now. Anyone at all? I need a motion to introduce the ordinance as read. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? We need a motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration. Is there any discussion? Clerk, we take a roll call and include me.
Anita Bedwell, Randy Weiss, Jeff Prince, Jamison Jenkins, Clark Hopper, Mayor Taylor.
Yes. Need a motion to adopt. Is there any discussion? Clerk, we take a roll call and include me.
Anita Bedwell, Randy Weiss, Jeff Prince, Jamison Jenkins, Clark Hopper, Mayor Taylor.
Yes. Number eight is ordinance number 594, and that's a public hearing amending zoning ordinance number 360 by amending section 332, continuation of non-conformities. And I would open that up for anyone that'd like to speak for or against that ordinance. Anyone for or against? Anyone at all? I need a motion to introduce the ordinance. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? We need a motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration. Any discussion? Clerk, you take a roll call and include me.
Anita Bedwell, Randy Weiss, Jeff Prince, Jamison Jenkins, Clark Hopper, Mayor Taylor.
Yes. Need a motion to adopt the ordinance. Is there any discussion? Clerk, we take a roll call and include me.
Anita Bedwell, Randy Weiss, Jeff Prince, Jamison Jenkins, Clark Hopper, Mayor Taylor.
Yes. Number nine is ordinance number 595, or yeah, 595. It's a public hearing amending zoning ordinance number 360 by amending section 40 and 8, appendix A. That's removing manufactured homes from conditional uses. And I would ask, does anybody would like to speak for or against this ordinance and this amendment? Anyone at all? Have to ask three times. So anybody? I need a motion to introduce the ordinance. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Need a motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor by, or clerk, we take a roll call and include me.
Anita Bedwell, Randy Weiss, Jeff Prince, Jamison Jenkins, Clark Hopper, Mayor Taylor.
Yes. Need a motion to adopt. Any discussion? Clerk, we take a roll call and include me.
Anita Bedwell, Randy Weiss, Jeff Prince, Jamison Jenkins, Clark Hopper, Mayor Taylor.
Yes. Number 10 is resolution number 24-19. It's transportation plan for the rebuild Alabama funds, and you guys are, have been sent the information on that. And this is a housekeeping measure that allows for us to continue to be a part of that transportation plan and receive those funds. And I would entertain a motion that we pass this resolution as read. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number 11 is budget revision for the Police Department. It's travel and training account noted, and for 2,164.65, that's reimbursement from Edgewell County Board of Education for SRO training, equipment and tools, and that's a count shown for $4,410. That's the sale of the vehicle from the Redfield Group. And the next item is miscellaneous, and that's from the account shown, and it's $1,802, and that payment from Carfax copies for the Edgewell County Sheriff's Office and record fees. And I would entertain a motion that we do all of those together. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? And now we're getting down to stuff that actually matters. And this is a proclamation number 24-06, and it's for Maxine Jones in her 102nd birthday. And she's going to be a member of our, the Rainbow City Centenarian Club, which we right now have two members. And so we're, we're just so thrilled to have Ms. Maxine here. I met Ms. Maxine out in, at our farmer's market, and she was out there gathering up her, her stuff for the week. And, and she's just so much fun, and she's, she's got so much knowledge and just such a, a great personality. And she kind of lit that parking lot up. And, and we're so thrilled to have her here and have her family members here with her. And if you don't mind, I'm gonna take a point of privilege and ask the clerk if she would read the proclamation to her.
Whereas Maxine Jones is a remarkable soul, celebrating her 102 years of life well-lived, and whereas she was born on Tuesday, August 22nd, 1922, in Parish, Alabama, to the loving parents of Bascom and Della Burkett, whereas she was one of 12 siblings, and whereas, with a heart filled with love, she shared a decade of joyous marriage with Charles Boszner, and whereas she was blessed with two wonderful sons, Robert and Terry, and whereas her legacy extends to four cherished grandchildren, Allison, Bethany, Patrick, and Heather, and seven delightful great-grandchildren, and whereas for the past 26 years, Rainbow City has been graced by her presence, where she found solace and community, and whereas she's a devoted member of Cherry Street Baptist Church, and exhibited compassion in visiting shut-ins, spreading warmth and kindness wherever she went, and whereas her nurturing spirit also found expression in her role as a nurse at St. Vincent's Hospital in Birmingham, where her care touched countless lives, and whereas in quiet moments, Maxine tended to her garden, finding peace and solace amidst the blooms, and whereas her secret to a long, fulfilling life is a mix of great genetics and unrelenting hard work, a testament to her resilience and spirit. And whereas we ask all residents of our community to join me in congratulating her being our fifth citizen inducted into the Rainbow City Centenarian Club, and now therefore I Joe Taylor, Mayor of Rain, the city of Rainbow City, Alabama, do hereby proclaim August 26, 2024, as Maxine Jones Day in Rainbow City, Alabama, and recognize and honor her personal sacrifices and accomplishments as we celebrate this milestone on her 102nd birthday. In witness thereof, I herein too set my hand and affix the corporate seal of the city of Rainbow City, this the 26th day of August 2024.
You mind if we roll you right up here so we can get your picture with the camera? They won't hit on the phone either.
What a pretty croissant. Do you see a little croissant?
So pretty.
Did I look good?
I don't know, not as good as she does.
The way she's on is about. Thank you so much for being here. We appreciate all that you've done for our city. So how, how long did you work? You told me out there in the parking lot, you worked at the, you were like eight?
Yep.
That's great. We appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You look pretty tonight. Okay, I'll see you at the farmer's market.
Just glad to be here.
Yes, ma'am.
I can't say enough about Ms. Maxine. She's straightened me out out there in that place. I think I called some sort of tomato by the wrong name, and she let me know that that wasn't it. So we appreciate y'all and thank y'all for coming. We can go to council members. Do, do we have any department heads that, that have anything? Chief, you want to come up?
Yes, please.
Yes, please. Yep. Yeah, we need to do that in form of a, okay, I'm sorry. No, that's fine. We'll do that. Okay, that'll be good. Okay, well, anybody else? Any other department head? Okay, we'll start with Mr. Weiss.
First of all, congratulations, Ms. Jones. It's, it's a miracle, it's a, an amazing accomplishment. You've lived a wonderful life, and we're so proud to have you here in Rainbow City. I want to continue to let our first responders know how much we appreciate what they do. And not only that, but just the people in general in Rainbow City, how they respond to crises and things of that nature, witnessing it firsthand, it's just really, it's, it's, it's an impressive feat. And I want to thank the police and fire chiefs and, and the people that work for them. And again, it's, I appreciate the opportunity to serve the citizens of Rainbow City. Mr. Prince?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep this brief tonight. I'll start out with our police and our fire department, and how appreciative I am as a member of the city council. And I think we all agree that we have the best chiefs in place. And it all starts there, and it all trickles downhill. And I, I think we've got the very best in Rainbow City, and they keep us safe every day. We take that for granted a lot. I know I do. I think we all do from time to time. But just want to thank them for their leadership through times. So, and Ms. Maxine Jones, 102, wow. My mom's 96, and, and I see that, I see that triple-digit coming hopefully one day. How, how many things that she has seen. My wife's in RN in Birmingham. I don't think I'm gonna get her to work till she's 80. I hope she's not watching this because she probably won't want to work near that long. But what a testament to life well-lived. And that's probably, we do a lot of things up here that are important to the city, but that's probably one of the most fun things we do, is to recognize our citizens for feats such as living to be 102. So thank her family for bringing her. And that's really all I have tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Ms. Bedwell?
You did keep it short. You always say that, and it never turns out the right way, does it? We're glad to see each and one of you. I guess y'all have all figured out already that we love to harass each other, and I'm very appreciative of each one of us up here that the fact that we all take it so well, and that we, we just enjoy working together. And, you know, that is really such a blessing when you have a group and that is so opinionated as we all are, that we can work together, have our opinions, and still come out to be, to come to be cordial and agree on things. And I'm just very appreciative of each and every one of you who are up here together, and, and very appreciative of the fact that we get to serve Rainbow City. Y'all know, I grew up here. This is my baby, and I love Rainbow City, and I like for things to go well and things to move forward. And so I appreciate each and every one of you, and all of us, and the folks in Rainbow City for supporting us and, and allowing it to be that way. But I too just was so excited about Ms. Jones 102. Wow, the things, I was sitting here thinking about the things that she has probably seen in her lifetime and the changes that, that she has seen. So we, Ms. Jones, we look forward to you, seeing you on your 103rd. But I just, just, every time that I get to have this little opportunity, I tell everyone about how much is going on in our city. And if you just, just take a minute and look, there are so many exciting things, and that is for every age group, not only for our children, but for up until age 102. I'm just very appreciative of that. So, but thank you for being here, and you can be next.
Mr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start off by saying that I appreciate Ms. Jones' family being here as well. It was an honor to have her. And as Ms. Bedwell said, I look forward to having her back next year on her 103rd birthday. I also want to say congratulations to Avery Daniel on being promoted to the Assistant Director of our animal shelter. I also want to say specifically thank you to our SROs in Rainbow City that is led by Lieutenant McCartney and Sergeant Pickard. Our school zone traffic has gone very smooth now that school has finally settled back in. And there's a lot of work that goes into that, so I just want to recognize them and tell them that we really appreciate them. I also would like to make a motion. We have a MOU that is between us and the Alea Region F Drug Task Force. It is the exact same one that we have in place now, and it is simply an extension. And I would like to make a motion that we extend that contract into next year.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Mr. Hopper? First, we want to, as the mayor and the council, we want to express our condolences to Jeff Harwood, who used to be the deputy chief and chief here. I known Jeff when I started policing in 1988. He was a good friend and he was a good officer, and he's going to be sorely missing. And so Rainbow City is a better place for having him here all those years. Next thing I want to do is, is thank, thank Southside High School. We had a great time Friday night and pre-game. The ballgame didn't come out the way we wanted it to. The pride of Southside sounded wonderful. The cheerleaders did a wonderful job. And we had a great crowd considering how hot it was. It's even hotter because there's standing room only. But to bring that up next would be the tragic events that happened in Selma this past Friday night. And like I said, we want to express the hour sympathy because that could happen at any time. I don't think that school is Alabama High School. I think it's one of the more private schools that play in their own league. But with that, I want to also thank everybody here for the donation that we give to the foundation because I'm sure those helmets look brand spanking new. I don't know what, what happened to this young man. But the first thing, as I coached three varsity football teams in my lifetime before I got into place to business. Appalachian, look at me pop down, Appalachian, Southside, and Westbrook. And budgets are tight. So I think what I want to say here is, is if you have the opportunity to get your car washed, buy a hat, buy a jersey, any fundraiser that involves these sports teams, take part in it. You're giving back to the kids, and we're trying to keep them as safe as we can. Because I know what Appalachian Nike Air helmets were out. That was a big thing, and, and the kids wouldn't pump them up right. And we played a game one time. We had seven concussions in one ballgame because they kept busting. So, but like I said, just keep that family in Selma, and your prayers, and be, be mindful that these games, these kids are bigger, they're stronger, they're faster, they can be hurt at any time. We just need to make it as safe as we can. And with that, I just want to say one more thing is, is Ms. Jones, that's just amazing. You know, that 102, was that 1922, if my science of math is correct, and just think she lived through the depression, all the wars, all the political, there's just the things that she saw would be, it's just amazing and stuff like that. I'll give the rest of my time to you, boss. Thank you. I appreciate it. Wednesday, August 28th, the Red Cross will do a blood drive here in the council chambers from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We do really good with that, and we'd appreciate anybody, not only for our employees, but also anyone from the outside to come in and, and donate that, that gift of life. Monday, September 2nd, city hall will be closed in observance of Labor Day. Garbage will not be serviced, so Tuesday through Saturday will be your garbage days. Friday, September 6th, 2024, groundbreaking for our new recreation center on Lumley Road at 10:00 AM. And we were inviting the public. We want everybody to come out. And this is a, this is a, a big thing for us. It's one of our catalyst projects that we know for this city to continue to move forward, continue to grow, and grow in the, the appropriate way and at the appropriate pace. We needed to have this recreation center, and we're going to get that started up and kick it off on September 6th, which is a Friday morning. Tuesday, September 17th, 2024, we're going to have a groundbreaking ceremony for the Challenge Center on Kenzie Lane at 10:00 AM, and there'll be more information and invitations that'll come out from the Challenger Committee. We're not trying to jump ahead of them. We just want to make sure that everybody around here has appropriate notice that, to get out and, and help us to kick off for that STEM Learning Center. It's going to be a great time. We're very, very close to presenting our budget to the council. I can't thank the staff enough. They go in, Ms. Beth and, and Crystal, and Cindy, and Karen, my assistant, they, they go through and they glean through this thing and look at it and make comparisons to the previous year and years. And then they present, and then I go in and, and build a budget off of what I think so that we're not just in there saying yes to each other. And when that's all said and done, it's amazing how it really comes out really, really close. I think I was a little bit showing a little bit less revenue and, and, and a little bit more expenditure. I think they did something a little bit different, and I'm kind of convinced that they're probably right. I, I have to also thank the people over in revenue. Heather Hill, this is her first chance at, at predicting what our income and revenue is going to be for the next year. She did an incredible job. We sat and talked about this the other morning. And, and she has some, some, some really great ideas about how she has to go in and create that revenue stream and, and try, try to find that predictability. And I think she- And I think she did very, very well in doing so. Anita brought up something, and it's about disagreements. I know that we come in and we show, we get along, there's no doubt about that. And we cut up with each other. I mean, we know things about each other because we spend quite a bit of time together. We obviously know that Randy Weiss is horrible at telling jokes. And, thank you, thank you, Clark. But, but, but one of the things that I think we don't show is we don't show a lot of disagreement, because we go into our pre-council and our work sessions, and we hash out the problems that, that we see or anything that might be coming. And let me say this, there are disagreements at times. I spent some time on the phone with one of our council members, and obviously I just let you know it's on this side, but I won't say which one. But we, you know, we had a disagreement, or maybe not even a disagreement, just needing more understanding before they cast their vote. That's fair for them to ask thee of those things, you know? They, they should feel the freedom to call and say, boss, I don't, well, Clark calls me boss, and that drives me crazy. But actually, what they're saying is, tell me why we, we're going in this direction. Tell me how it's gonna help the better part of our citizenry. And, and for them to be open-minded enough to hear our voice and the planning and the, and the execution of, of our comprehensive plans for this city says a whole lot about these people up here. And there's no doubt that there's time coming where they're gonna have to make a decision as to whether they're gonna stay in their place or whether they're gonna move on. And I just want you to know, starting right now, before it becomes political in the world, that I appreciate the people that I work with up here. And with that, I'd entertain a motion that we adjourn. Thank you, and thank you for being here.